Morning Jim.
Good morning.
Jim, I'm sort of waiting for Alan Gregory because I thought he was going to be here. Have you, do you have another update from him?
Um, he was indicating that he was going to join remotely via Zoom. Um, but I don't see him.
And you haven't heard from him? You don't have a text or anything? I don't either.
No, he sent me one earlier, said he was, he was, uh, going to have to join remotely.
Yeah, I knew he wouldn't be here and Barbara Winter isn't here either. She had a last minute conflict. So, so let's go ahead and get started. Um, and hopefully Alan will join us in a bit. Yeah, I'm seeing that and I think. Yeah, I think that's right. City Clerk Jim, us. Alright, so I'll call us to order at nine thirty-four and ask for public comment. Seeing no public, we'll go to approval of the September minutes. Any comments or questions about the minutes?
Move approval as presented.
Second. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, John Maynard's abstaining, motion carries, uh, financial reports.
Yeah, so I did finally hear from Nathan at Halting and Company who's apparently, he's the one that gets all the data and should have been producing the financial reports and hasn't for July or August. And he was transitioning to another job. He says he'll work on them this week and eventually they'll get somebody who's more, who can focus on them better, but he did apologize, but we have no financials.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Um, we're moving to old business. Carol, website and accessibility update.
So I am really excited to announce, yay, we have a website. So John, I'll take your photo. That'll take care of the last of the pieces that need to be updated. Um, so I want to give you kind of where we stand with accessibility. We had a great meeting, Marian and I with Jeff Fryer here in the city. And, um, so he said a couple of things. He said he doesn't believe it needs to come under the purview of the city. Because of the level of visitorship and stuff like that. He said he thinks that we can manage the accessibility based on a couple of things. So he actually ran scans with a couple of open source tools that he recommended to us. We ran scans on it. And then the two, two, uh, so open source scan tools are Wave and Silk Tide. So that's what he's going to run his scans on for the city site. So I recommend that we continue running them on our site. He doesn't believe we need to purchase a plugin Civic Plus or anything like that. I mean, basically what's going to happen is our accessibility will mirror the city's accessibility. Um, and he's actually going to cancel the city's subscription to the AudioEye platform. He doesn't believe that these platforms actually do what really needs to be done to manage accessibility appropriately. Yeah, so that was his. He said, no, you don't need a plugin. We're not going to have a plugin ourselves. Specifically, he recommended we change copy on the alt tags, which we did. Um, it, it's kind of a semantic thing, but our alt tags were redundant. So it would say, this is a picture of Manitou Avenue. And he's like, just change it. So it's like Manitou Avenue at Sunset featuring cars and whatever else. So you got rid of some of that redundant language that made them generic. We already took care of that. Um, what else? Secondly, he recommended we, uh, fix the focus of the content. So the focus is really just up like a flow tool to see it goes from here to here to here to here, the flow of where the website is. We actually did some research on that and we were actually able to fix that as well. Um, and he said, he doesn't believe we need to be concerned about the documents and the PDFs that we link to on the city site. The city has a plan to get those done. He said he'll have a solution by year end and that solution would resolve the issue as for us as well. So basically we're done. The main thing that I would suggest, and I would have suggested this anyway, is that Marian does an annual maintenance package where she goes in once a month, checks for broken links, checks for outdated software, that sort of thing. It's $200 a month, $2,400 a year billed annually. So it would be billed for October through September of next year. Um, and then what would be added to that particular scope of work is she'd run the two accessibility, um, scans as well, and then make any updates to those as necessary. So yay, sorry it took so long. Um, you know, Jeff was getting up to speed. He's been fantastic. Um, he comes from the accessibility and IT world. And what he said, sort of, um, you know, in conversation was these apps are designed to make companies a lot of money, providing solutions that don't necessarily address the core of the problem and that the open source scans address the latest software or the latest, um, government instructions as far as what accessibility needs to look like. So yeah, he was actually very positive about where we stood. So yeah, I think this means we have a website pending your picture. Any questions or concerns about anything?
That's good news.
Okay. And I don't know if you need a formal proposal for mayor's. I can get you that. Okay.
Would you like to see that? I would like to see that. Yeah.
Yep, I can totally do that.
Okay.
I'll get that to you, Jim, and we can address that next month or however you guys want to deal with it.
Okay, Carol, thank you very much. That's excellent news and I'm glad that the city has such competent help on board to get them through their bigger issues. That's great. Um, preliminary budget.
So as I was telling Farley, I will provide a preliminary budget on October fifteenth as required by state law. We are still trying to work through some issues with the treasurer on what the property tax should be because there's a big, fairly big discrepancy between what Becca was finally able to get from the assessors office. We've never gotten a number from the treasurer's office and when we get the monthly reports, it doesn't show a total that is expected. So we're working on that. The assessed value that we got preliminary, the preliminary assessed value that you get at the end of August had gone down about six percent. Which is surprising kind of, but, um, so I had whatever we finally decided we're going to get this year, I'll reduce by six percent for the decline in assessed value. And then of course, the state statute that was passed in the special session, I have no clue what that's going to do. So we'll see if anybody does. So you'll get, I will go ahead and transmit a preliminary budget on October fifteenth to you all.
Okay. Any questions about that for Ann? Alright.
So the timetable then would be, uh, the board would approve the budget in November or December, I suppose.
I think we usually approve it in December because we don't have to certify a mill levy. So if, and of course now our meeting's really early in December, so it wouldn't have mattered anyway. But yeah, we would, I would think we would approve it in December.
Okay, and I haven't received any requests from anybody on the board for any changes to the rough draft you put together before.
Okay, good.
Did that include some of my requests? I can't remember if that was before or after.
Yeah, I, I had checked when you and I talked and it's in there. There's enough in there to cover.
Okay.
The signs, right?
The signs. Oh, and you're in DCI. The.
Oh, right. And there's enough to cover them. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions about budget? Okay, uh, the one, two, three Manitou Avenue concept plan, Jim?
Yeah, this is just a real quick update, uh, not a lot of detail. Uh, as you remember, uh, the, uh, Paragon prepared a concept plan that went to, uh, went to planning commission on the eleventh and planning commission gave it concept approval. Uh, and so at this point, what they are working on is a, as you remember, uh, they're going to need a variance for density. And so they are working on that. There's a several criteria that have to be met. And I think their intention at this point is to work on that and try to submit a variance request in November.
They also met with.
Any questions?
They also met with the housing advisory board like the following week, didn't they? I didn't attend that, but John, did you attend that?
I did.
Okay, and that went well too? That session?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
The, um, the housing advisory board was very supportive of the project.
So good, good news. They're moving forward. Under new business, we have the executive director contract, but that is from old, from a past, uh, agenda. So I'm skipping that one. And with, the only thing we have left is Nancy's report. And as you know, she always has a standing meeting on this day, so she is not here yet. So I think what I'd like to do is move to other business. We can go into executive session and if Nancy shows up, when we open back up, we can take her item. Otherwise, we will move that to next month. Yeah, Jim. Oh, your report. You have a report. Sorry.
Yeah, I have a few things, not much, but I have a few things here, uh, on the. Um, well, we just talked about the, uh, uh, one twenty-three Manitou, so I'm not going to go into more details on that. Um, a couple of things though, I think Debbie, you had a couple of questions for me last month. One was regarding, uh, major increase in weeds along the corridor. I did discuss that with Denise. And they have contacted a lot of the property owners that were, uh, not addressing it and kind of giving them an ultimatum where they will be fine. So the city's working on that. They also apparently did some weed control at the Dillon and, uh, along around Highway twenty-four. So I, I haven't, obviously I haven't seen it. Uh, but, uh, she assures me that it's better than it was. Um, so they're working on that. Um, the other issue that I think, I'm sorry.
Marcy Morrison would be quite proud of you right now. I just want to point that out to you. When I, when I asked, I said, I feel like Marcy bringing up the issue of maintenance along the avenue, but it really, it was an issue because the city apparently believed that we took care of weeds along the avenue for pri- uh, on private property, which there was, there was an issue there. So, um, it was good, Jim, that you cleared that up. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and, uh, Denise finally just agreed that, that the URA is not an enforcement agency. Uh, the other thing, speaking of which, uh, is the little building, the little unit on the Park Row Lodge that was, that burned. Um, the city has issued a, you know, requirement that they repair that. Uh, they have six months to do that and the deadline is the sixteenth of May of next year. Um, I did reach out to them, by the way, uh, to see what the status was. And she told me that there's some legal action they've had to take and she didn't explain what the lawsuit would be about. But they've had to do something with that, uh, on that building. And, but they intend to fully restore it. Um, I did also mention to them that, you know, by the way, we do have a site improvement facade grant now available. Uh, if they wanted to do other improvements or fix that up better. Uh, and so they are definitely going to take a look at that. I gave them the website. Uh, since it's now up and running and all the references are there, so that was great. Uh, but they may take a look at that and want to consider doing some improvements to the property. And let's see, the last thing I had was, uh, talking with Scott DeWalt, who is the owner of the Martin property. Uh, they have been spending a bunch of money, I guess, at this point on the interior, trying to make the place habitable. Um, and they're kind of running out of cash. Uh, he wanted to know if there was any way that the URA would pay for, help use a grant to pay for anything inside the building. I haven't responded to that. Typically, we don't. Uh, not to say that you couldn't, but he wanted to know if there's any money available for that. Uh, he would like to apply for a site improvement facade grant. Uh, but again, they said, we just don't have the matching money available at this point. Uh, so I thought I'd bring it up to the board to see what your response to that was.
Jim, are, are they, um, are they a nonprofit housed by a nonprofit? Or an for-profit?
Yeah, they are.
Profit?
Yeah, the, 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 the ownership is as a nonprofit. So they have a board of directors and he has to report to them as far as any money they spend.
And the business is separate from the building owner? Are they both nonprofit? Are they two separate entities?
I don't, I, I know what you're asking Farley. I don't know if the business itself will be a for-profit. I understood in my earlier conversations with him that basically he and his partner who were therapists would be renting the building from the nonprofit.
My assumption is that there's no, um, improvements, site improvements that they need to do that would, um, fall under our purview like asbestos abatement or other things like that, that everything that they need to do to the interior of the building is, are, are not things that an urban renewal authority would typically assist with. That's my assumption. Is that your assumption as well, Jim?
I don't know. He didn't, he didn't elaborate on what they're spending the money on. I think, and Farley, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the building did have some asbestos problems. So I don't know if that was part of their costs, I would assume, but I don't know that.
I, I don't recall asbestos. I recall mold.
Ah, mold, okay.
Well, they need mold mitigation down in that corner. Um, we could, we could consider possibly the facade improvement grant if they got to the point where they might need a nice sign, some improvements to the exterior.
Yeah, yeah, but otherwise, especially if the building is owned by the nonprofit, there's no tax. Right? They're not paying any property tax, so we can't do a rebate. And unless the business is a retail business, there's no sales tax. So, and we aren't in a position to negotiate that with them very well right now anyway. So yeah, I think we're, I think we're down to facade improvement grant. I don't see that we have any other option, any other choice.
Yeah, I don't know if they actually would have to pay property tax. Um, there's a gray area there that, you know, if you, you know, are a nonprofit, but you lease the building to a for-profit, that then there is a question of whether or not property taxes should be collected. Um, and he has not explained to me exactly their structure yet, or if they will be paying property tax. I've asked him that before, so I, I don't have an answer.
Okay. Yeah, the, the only avenue I can think of is that if he has to do, if they have to do any improvements that fall under our ability to reimburse, for example, property tax, I personally would be willing to take a look at that, but it sounds, it so far, it sounds like that is not the case. Um, and otherwise the facade improvement grant fits.
Okay, I can follow up with him again and say, you know, at this point, you should probably know whether or not you're going to, the nonprofit is going to have to pay property tax or not. So I can find out.
Okay, yeah, because if they are in that spot, then at least we could offer them that benefit potentially. But they'd have to up their game in terms of, um, what improvements need to be done and what we can possibly support.
Okay. That's about all I've got on my report. Uh, are there any questions?
Thanks, Jim. Nancy, your report.
Just in time, huh? Not much. We did approve holiday lighting along with the URA is doing holiday lighting again, so we'll be bright, cheery for Christmas. Um, we got, uh, planned Manitou updates last week and I think some of you are participating in that process, so nothing concrete yet, but it's moving along. Um, Creek Week is this past week and this coming week, and I think it's a Saturday that Manitou is participating actively in cleaning up the creek. So that's good. Um, we are approving a, um, ordinance to do speed cameras. So you've probably read about that. Um, and it's a little trickier than we had first thought, but we're still going to approve the ordinance to do it and then we'll look at the equipment and the backend stuff of how you actually process the, uh, tickets, because that's the challenging part. The Dillon demo is coming along and pretty much done. Um, we, um, I can't remember if I told you this already, but the shuttle buses that we had, the two E trams, basically were lemons, um, or just didn't work in this environment. So they have gone back to the manufacturer. They were still under warranty. We still really like the concept. We want to do something with that. Um, but we have more research to do on what, what that's going to look like. But when it, when they're running, they, it was going very, very well. Uh, Soda Springs Park, uh, park contract is going through tonight for phase, the next phase. Uh, which is basically the playground, re- completely redoing the playground. Um, what a treatment plant contract is supposed to go through tonight. So huge improvements, got a huge loan for that. So that's hopefully going through. Um, tonight, we're also looking at the, um, special district, whether it be DDA, expanding the URA bid, whatever that looks like. So that'll be a discussion tonight. We won't be deciding what the options will be. And I think Farley, you've been involved in that, haven't you? Yeah. Uh, so that'll, that should be an interesting discussion tonight. They're laying out numerous options and, uh, but they're not ready for a decision yet. They're just going to be looking at, uh, just basically updating us. And then tonight, very interesting is the natural medicine ordinance we'll be discussing, which basically is mushrooms and a few other things. Um, and yeah, it's, it's a state requirement now. The state voted on it in twenty twenty-two, so we, we have no choice. Um, there will be uh, magic mushrooms allowed. Um, it's just how it's regulated. So we're going to be looking at options for that this evening. So that it should be a very interesting discussion this evening between the special district and magic mushrooms. So tune in. Starts at five, but we have an executive set. Thank you. It's, we have an executive session up front. So it, and we're starting at five so that folks can go home and watch the debate. it, and we're starting at five so that folks can go home and watch the debate. So yeah, thank you again. Any questions?
So the executive session starts at five?
Correct.
I have a question about the Dillon. Has a consultant been selected yet to do the design?
Yes, I believe we have. I need to go back and check, John. I think we have, but I think we did. Yeah.
Okay, I'm curious to whose is. Is it Matrix? Matrix?
Yes, it's Matrix Design Group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions for Nancy? Thank you so much. Um, any items of other business? It's a quiet group today. Okay, so, um, I'm going to ask that we adjourn to executive session. So I need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Then we'll figure out the logistics of doing that.
So move.
Oh, sorry. I do, I do need to read the whole thing. Um, we are going to into executive session to determine positions relative to personnel matters. And I'm just going to cite the statute and not read all the paragraphs. It is, uh, Colorado revised statute twenty-four dash six dot dash four oh two, uh, parentheses four. And we're dealing with sections F, I, and it looks like two, F one and two. That's very odd. So, uh, motion to adjourn was made by John Maynard and seconded by Farley McDonough. And, uh, with that, we'll, uh, go into executive session and come out and close the meeting in a bit. Thanks.
Debbie?
Yeah.
It's Barb Winter.
Yes.
I just joined you by Zoom. I got out of another appointment early. Can I join you in executive session or are you going to cut off the video?
No, I, you, you certainly can because Jim and Alan need to be with us too. Jim, do I need to ask someone in the city clerk's office to shut their part down? Is that what we do?
Yeah, I recall the last time we did this that, uh, they had to come in and basically uh, restart the meeting and not let anybody else in other than, uh, the three of us.
Okay, so that, I'm going to go do that. So just hang on tight. We'll be back.